...City Council will now be called order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Oh, mercy.
Roll call, please.
Conaway.
Here.
Ivancho.
Here.
Loughman.
Here.
Leonard.
Here.
McMillan.
Here.
Wolverton.
Here.
I make the motion to excuse Council President Kogle.
I'm gonna second that now that my microphone's in front of me.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, that motion carries. Reading of the minutes. Mr. Harlan.
I make a motion we dispense with the reading of the minutes and place on file.
I second that motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, that motion carries. Mayor's report.
Good afternoon. Council President, you've kinda... Looks like you... I don't know what happened.
That's fair.
But anyhow, it's nice to see something going on. Let's go to our normal notes. In general business, I do have one to lead to committee for next week, and that would be City Engineer Jeff McConahay requests to apply for and enter into contract with ODOT for safer house-to-school funding again, and you know how much help that's been in the past, so we'll be looking forward to that. And that's pretty much it. Normally, I have my tidbits on the side, but we'll dispense of that to move into the rest of the evening.
You will refer that to the Finance Committee?
That'll be fine. So let's move into why we're all here, and I just... Actually, you know, when I heard the kind of rumbling of everybody coming in, it's just, it's good to hear this, feel this, you know? What you see in front of you is the people that get the jobs done and lead the divisions and make things happen. Sometimes you'll hear me go up and give a synopsis on each one of their reports. Some of them in the audience don't much want to be here tonight, and other ones can't wait, but it's their turn. And it's their world too, and I think it's important that they get seen and talk about that, and we've asked them to stick to the three-minute area. Good luck with that. I think there's a couple new excited ones in the audience. I'll let you figure out which ones they are. And in front of you, you've been all given a packet of all their reports, and even though they'll give you an overview, I really want, and I assume you do read these, and deep in there, there's a lot of seriously good information, and there'll be more forthcoming through the media sources and stuff, but this is where the rubber hits the road literally. This will close out 2018 and give you an idea where we're going in 2019. So with no more said, I've got a yellow paper listed up there, and we're gonna start out with public safety. We shook it up a little bit this year. We do have some people that have to be in other places, and I've asked for some to stick around, much to their chagrin. So with that said, public safety, Rocky Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council.
Evening.
Distinguished guests, fellow employees, all. I will be brief on this because I want to give the time that I may have for my staff members that will be following up behind me. In my eyes, 2018 was a really good year. We were successful in dealing with a lot of new things and some continuing issues and challenges as we continue to provide the very best services for the citizens of Cambridge. However, with the present leadership that we have within the departments I directly oversee, these areas were dealt with efficiently, effectively, and professionally. I directly oversee the operations of the Code Enforcement Department, Economic and Community Development, the Fire Department, and the Police Department, but indirectly deal with other departments as needed. Just to give you a few highlights of some things, within the Police Department last year, and this would be through civil service also, which I deal directly with, it was the first time in the history of our department that we ever hired four officers at one time. Unfortunately, one of those officers decided not to stay and left during his field training officer timeframe, but that was getting us close to being up to full staff. Now, obviously, we're not there at that point, but we are working towards that way. But those officers and everybody at that department works very hard. We worked a lot in completing a lot of information that I will let Chief Delancey bring to you all the statistical data that he needs to convey to you. As far as the Fire Department, obviously, that was our second year running around with the emergency responders and the first responders to medical issues, and I will let Chief Deeks convey those statistics to you as well. Code Enforcement, obviously, is another area that we've been fairly busy with. You know that the mayor is big on the property maintenance and such, and we work hard to try to keep up with all that, but obviously, with one person in that staff, it makes it a little tough from time to time, but I will let Kim Conrath convey those information to you as well. Probably the biggest thing that this office dealt with during last year is dealing with the building project as we completed all the processes to not only get through the planning phase, but also into the actual building and renovating of the Huntington Building for the Police Department. We were projected to be in by September 1st. That got delayed for a couple reasons and didn't get into October 1st. Had some issues still getting the lockers, which didn't come until and completed by the second week of November, but we're working through that. We're still trying to close out the first phase. Obviously, the government shutdown had a little slowdown for us on that so that we can get ready on the Phase Two. Still projecting that hopefully that Phase Two will be done, and we could possibly be moving City Hall by October of this year. And I will say that as Safety Director, I still continue to oversee several different areas and attend those meetings and work with the folks in different aspects of the city, and I'm very happy to serve the citizens of this community, and will continue to strive to make our city safer, more secure, and appealing to those who are here and those that wish to relocate here. And with that, I will defer to our next person, which will be Chief Deeks from the Fire Department.
Thanks, City Director Hill. Members of Council, good evening. Hope everyone's doing well tonight. What I can say about 2018 is we started two years ago on a strategic plan for the Fire Department, not only to take us our current needs, but also look in the future and what we possibly might need, and it's happy to tell you that we've worked really hard on that, and we have accomplished a lot. But for the year 2018, we did a total of 2,227 calls. You can see the breakdown of how many were in the city, how many were in the township, and how many was for mutual aid to the area volunteer fire departments that we support, and they support us at times, too. And then you also see underneath that a breakdown of the EMS calls within the city, and there was some out in the township. That happens sometimes. We're not gonna deny service if someone's having a medical issue. We're gonna respond. But the big thing I want to... I think right in that run breakdown by type is you see the calls 2017 under motor vehicle accidents. Now, when I talk about motor vehicle accidents, what we responded to there this year, these were actual extrication entanglements that we had to use our jaws. We went from 63 in 2017 to 121 for 2018. We were on the interstates a lot, unfortunately. So it's been real busy out there for us along with everything else, but you see our busiest month was August. Busiest day of the month was Friday, and the busiest time of day was around 3:00 PM when we got the calls, so... But as I talked about earlier, we had a lot big on strategic plans. We never... The department never really had something set up to look at, a document to look at what we might need in the future, and next few pages there, I have listed some things we did. My number-one thing there was for firefighter safety and health, and if you see on page two there, there's a high rate of cancer among firefighters just because of the stuff that we get into, the stuff that's in people's homes, and there's the breakdown of the risk of that. We are currently working on plans to see what we can do as a city to protect our firefighters a little bit better. I've had countless meetings with Safety Director Hill, Sallan Johnson, City Auditor, and they've been really instrumental in guiding me along and trying to keep me patient, you know, which is pretty hard for me to be patient about things, so... But work on that next part was the fire engine. I am happy to report that this is the last year of our ladder truck payment, that thing we paid off this year. Now, the bad news is, we have an engine that's going to need replaced, but we saw this coming. Part of our strategic plan, we saw this coming down the road. Again, working closely with City Hall, we created another line item, and in our budget every year, when we did the budget, we would put money... We'd budget money into that, budget money into that. So by the time we get to that point where we might start to have to go through the process, we're gonna have at least half the cost of a brand-new engine. I'm hoping to have more, but, you know, it's... Again, we're just waiting to see how things go. So we've been working very hard towards that. Our first responder program, again, has been busy. I know there's been talks out there. I hear the rumors. I see the social media posts. You know, they see a fire truck, they see a police car, and they see an ambulance, and they automatically think orders. You know? That's not always the case. That could be your grandmother, your grandma, your aunt, your uncle having a medical condition. You know, we're here. We're hired to protect the citizens of Cambridge Township, and I will do everything possible to make sure that happens. So... But there's some little bit of facts in there about our first responder program, some of the things we went on. Another thing we wanted to develop was our officers to promote. We just had some books you study. If you've got the highest grade, you want the job. You know, you're going from buddy to boss. That's a tough transition to go to for some people sometimes, okay? So we wanted to enhance that program a little bit more to prepare our future officers up and coming for that role, you know, your responsibilities. My thought, when you become an officer at the Cambridge Fire Department, is we're not asking you to do less. I'm asking you to do more. You have more of a responsibility now, and I expect that from the officers down there. So I'm working hard on that. Education's always been big for us. As you can see there, I'm very happy to say that we have several members going through getting their associate's degree, and I will support that 100% as much as I can because that will not only help the department, but it can also help the city, so I'm real forward to that. So we'll see stuff about our grants that we received this past year on that. Real lucky on those. I shoot for any grants, as the Finance Committee knows, that we can shoot for, so... But so it's been a real busy year. You guys are more than welcome to come down. I can't thank the guys enough down at the fire station for what they do and what they give to the city, so... Other than that, I'm probably at six minutes.
Close.
You hit the close.
I'm over, so... Any questions?
No questions.
All right. I have to get to another engagement that I was the guy that had to change things up, so anyhow, thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thanks, Chief. This time, I'd like to call up Code Enforcement Officer Kim Conrath.
Good evening. I'll try to use less time. In fact, I probably will. I want to thank you all for your patience during the last eight weeks when I've been off. I'll be back part-time starting next week. Code Enforcement was busy again. As it has been in the past, we always deal with well over 200 complaints regarding anything from trash, garbage, junk cars, and just dilapidated properties in general. So we dealt with that the same as last year. One of our main projects is always the spring cleanup. This year, again, summer help from the Street Department and the Sewer Department mowed approximately 80 times for us, so that was something that they absorbed the costs on. 703 times yards were mowed this summer. That's way higher than it's been. It's about 80 or 90 more than what it's been in the past. We have two outside contractors that mowed for us, and the amount expended this year was $19,875, and that is up about $3,000 or $4,000 over last year. A total of $21,973 was recovered from liens, and these are the liens that I put on every year with the admin fee after the mowing, so that gives me a good start for the year. And mowing is completed usually in the months from April to October, and this year it was from the very beginning of April to the very end of October. Throughout the year, towards the end of the year, Council approved an appropriation of $25,000 because we haven't typically had money in the demolition light item for the last few years in my department. This enabled us to demolish three properties. Two had been damaged by fire and were uninsured, and the third one was a heavily dilapidated property that had been standing for years. Those locations were 1253 Gomber Avenue, 318 North Fifth, 425 North Seventh, and it took almost exactly all of that $25,000, but we did a bait and test for asbestos in each one as required by the EPA. Also dealt with five total fires in the past year. Two of those, the city absorbed the cost for. Insurance or did or is covering two of the properties, and one is in the process of foreclosure with somebody that's interested in buying that, so that'll be something that we don't have to take care of, luckily. The garage demolition program, again, happened. We had two blighted structures this year at a cost of $1,102. In May, with the support of Council, as in the past, we... I think this is our ninth year for spring cleanup and tire removal. We again partnered with Cambridge, Jefferson, and Madison Townships. In the past, we... As in the past, we share those costs, and that's what we did again. The tire drop-off is at the city, as usual, and dumpsters were again provided by Bucky Disposal, and the tire trailer was contracted through Campbell. We also had about 200 hours total worked by city employees, council members, and my office. In addition, this year, and I want to thank again, and we've mentioned it in the past, we've been working more closely with Municipal Court, specifically Magistrate Liston and the Community Service Department, and they were a great help with manpower under the direction of Magistrate Liston and Seth Kogle on that Saturday. We filled 35 dumpsters. We had almost 100 tons of trash, which was slightly up from last year. We collected $3,302 in scrap as well as $436 for tires. The total cost of the dumpsters was $96.80 and $1,850 for the tire trailer, so plus all the employees, but it's a good... Something that everybody looks forward to. I know I'm going fast, but you guys can read the rest, okay? I can't stand here much longer, unfortunately, so again, I'm sorry for that. In the fall, we did have a half-a-day cleanup. I'm not sure that it was as much of a success as we would like. We did collect 14 tons of trash, and again, the Municipal Court provided almost all the manpower for that morning, so we really appreciate that. Since we did not have tire removal at that time, the CDC received a county-wide tire grant this year and allowed us to get rid of all the rest of the tires that we've collected throughout the years, plus the overflow, which we had quite a bit from that spring cleanup, and we donated $200 to them for that service. As in the past, I continue to work with the Police and Fire Department, Jobs and Family, Adult Protective Services, and again, I want to stress the expansion of what we've been able to do with Municipal Court. Tom wanted me to mention about the land bank, and it's completed its first full year of being in existence, and we have, as you probably know in the past, we had received a large grant. It is a county-wide grant. Luckily, this year, it was mainly for demolitions, and of the 11 properties that were demolished with that money, eight of them were within city limits. So on top of the three that we did, 11 properties were demolished. Thank you very much. I always appreciate your support.
Thank you, Kim. This time, Economic and Community Development Coordinator, Kim Hahn.
I'm really a little brief.
Hey, Kim, before you get started...
Good evening.
It's something I probably should've said before we started here tonight, that these reports are all packed full of tons of information, and there's no possible way you're gonna be able to get it all out in three minutes. So if you could just kind of give us a generalization of what's in there, we will all read it, and anybody in the public that is interested in a copy of this can call up to City Hall and get a copy of it. So I know if you're watching tonight, it may seem like we're going really quick, but it's just we're just kind of trying to sum it all up, and if you want a report, you're welcome to call and get a full report.
Okay, so you guys have my report in front of you. I'm just gonna give a brief highlight of some of the things we accomplished in 2018. We completed a 2016 CHIP grant, which assisted 15 homes with full rehab, 27 home repairs, one rental rehab, which had six units. Another grant we completed was the Downtown Revitalization Grant. It assisted 15 building owners to make repairs to their buildings, provided up to $20,000 in grant funds, which the building owners had to match. Successful program. We also were lucky enough to receive a 2018 CHIP grant in the amount of $700,000, and it'll assist 10 homeowners with full rehabs, two rentals, and 16 home repairs, and also a Habitat for Humanity project we'll be doing. And 2018 allocation grant we received, and that is gonna bring down that ugly building on North Seventh Street, which everybody's gonna applaud when that comes down. We'll also be assisting with eight home repairs on that grant also, and be giving Countryview, the former county home, ADA bathroom. So also, we received a grant for Byzville. It's a critical infrastructure grant, and it'll assist with the Glass Avenue culvert project. So we just heard on that one. Let's see. Our department also does environmental inspections, which is huge. Colin Sattick, she is a licensed lead risk assessor, and she inspects for lead-based paint, and also an asbestos inspector. So if you guys ever run across anybody that needs those inspections, they can call our department and make an appointment, and we provide that service. This is huge because these grant dollars are very, very competitive throughout the United States. Our department assisted the Guernsey County Sheriff's Department and the Guernsey County Help Choice Program in obtaining a grant. It was a 2018 Comprehensive opioid Abuse Site-Based Program grant in the amount of That grant will provide a body scanner for Guernsey County Sheriff's Department, which is huge, and also with intense counseling at the Sheriff's Department. And basically, folks, that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Kim. Thank you, Kim. And last, under my area is Chief of Police Mark Delancey.
Good evening, everyone. Again, 2018, very busy for the Police Department, a very exciting year for us. Like I said, everybody else said, yeah, the report in front of you. I'm not gonna run through every stat that we had, but I'm just gonna hit some highlights. First thing is, like Director Hill said, you know, we moved into the new building in October. That was an incredible year getting there with everything that had to be done, everything had to come together all at once. With the radios, we had to flick a switch on one location, turn it on within minutes at the other one, and make it work, and luckily, it all did work. It all came together, and if you get an opportunity, stop down. It's a beautiful facility. It turned out really nice for us, so... First off, like Director Hill also said, we're working towards getting the department at full staff. We right now sit at 26 officers, sworn officers, from myself down to the lowest patrolman. We'd like that to be at 28. Was hoping to reach that by now, but there's other considerations in the works, but hopefully in the next year or so, we can get there and have us up to what I think is full staff. Again, busy year. Around 9,500 total calls for service. You can look at the breakdown through the Patrol Division, and again, that's just a little synopsis of things we do, but there's other areas if you wish to come down and look. We can talk about it. Detective Bureau, a lot busier than normal, but... And they continue that right at the beginning of the year. We're just keeping rolling. So we've got some exciting things we did. We graduated our second Citizens Police Academy. We did that, which we did both of those through a grant we received from the State of Ohio. We're gonna do our third one here, starting in March, so we're very excited about that. We expanded our senior check program from 12 individuals up to 16. The officers check on homebound elderly individuals twice a month, so we're up to 16 on that now. So that's about all we can handle with the number of officers we have, but we're very proud of that in conjunction with the Senior Center, Sean Gress there. The one area that we're really concerned about going into 2019 is the continued opiate epidemic. We have made a big dent in that, we believe, in the last two years. We put a lot of effort and put a lot of money into it, but we continue to see some trends we really don't like. 2018, we respond... Our officers responded to 95 overdose calls. Of those 95 we responded to, two were deaths, and officers administered Narcan 36 times. That's just our department. That's not United, that's not the FD, you know, that's just us alone. So it is very concerning where the trend for the heroin is dropping in this area of the state. All the statistics point that way. The meth is shot through the roof. So just something I'd like you to make aware of, not to end on a bad note, because we did have a very successful year at the Police Department, but it's something we are concerned about, and we will continue to battle it. And with that being said, I mean, the guys at the Police Department right now, I can't thank them enough. The officers do a great job. It's probably the best group I've ever been associated with as a whole. They're smart, they're hard chargers, and there's just no quid pro quo, there's not. So they do a very good job, and without them, you know, I don't think we'd have the community we have today. So again, if there's any questions, or if you guys like and want to stop down, we can go over this report, let me know, and we'll get together, so thank you.
We'll move into the next series, too, here, and that will be public service, and we'll start out Tom Lanning.
See if I can't get you caught up on time a little bit here. All years are different at the Cambridge Street Department. 2018 was no exception. Taking on the normal duties being performed, including the Christmas tree pickup starting the year, to snow removal, stoning alleys, cold patching, into the spring cleanup, pick-up sticks, summer mowing, pothole patching, storm sewer repairs, and traffic light maintenance, and then into the fall with the leaf pickup, and then back into winter with snow again. The Street Department spent several hours working on the new Police Department, saving several thousand dollars. We also had several projects last year. We had major waterline breaks that damaged a lot of street. We spent a lot of time there. I had a one-month period where I lost a foreman and three guys for pretty much the whole month between waterline projects and that. All the duties were accomplished with a very dedicated crew with over 140 years' experience. This crew is willing to take on any project handed to them and not bat an eye and go after it. So if you have any questions on my full report, I ask you to stop down in the office, take a look at our facility, and go through things. Thank you.
Tom.
Next, we have James Green, Cemetery.
I'm done. Any questions?
What'd he say?
I'm done. Do you have any questions?
Favorite time of the year?
You get extra time, James, because Tommy didn't use all his.
Well, I'm sure I'm gonna need all of them, so... Well, first of all, I'd like to thank the guys I work with. It's been a little bit difficult for us out there the last couple of months with some health problems with families and members of their family, so we're gonna get through it, and Tom and Skip Weatherall, so, you know, and all the seasonal workers we've had. I thank them all. Wasn't for them guys, Cemetery wouldn't look as good as it does in our eyes, anyway. In 2018, 109 in the tournaments, which is right on what we had last year, 109. The revenue coming in, I'm not gonna go through all that. It's basically the same again, so... We took the 40-by-70 building out back on North Eighth Street with the landscaping. I think it was Adam Means' place. We're in that right now. We've still got some furniture in our way, so hopefully that gets out for long so we can get some of our equipment in there. We did go ahead and put two overhead doors, made them a little bit taller, a little bit wider, so we could get tobacco in our dump truck and some other equipment that Mavis City wants to put in there also. The Veterans Commission bought three new flagpoles for the city. Two's in the Northwood Cemetery, and both of their veteran sections, they're the 40-footers, and one at the old City Cemetery where they just donated, because that one was really bad. We did put them up for them. Trees, we took down 21 trees, five of those with some large pine trees. Trees, we took down twenty-one trees, five of those with some large pine trees, and we planted twenty-four new trees. Two of them trees was memory trees, was donated by Tom and Charlotte McCartney. The foundation for the octagon mausoleum, the niches, now I want to explain what a niche is, so, so no confusion. A niche is for cremations that we put inside of a wall. It's scheduled to come to our cemetery right around the middle of February, and it's going to be a hundred and twenty new spaces for niches, for cremations. We're hoping to go ahead and open up Section sixty-eight, looks like about two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred lots will be in that section, and also start getting to the expansion of the cemetery there off of North Eighth Street, on the north end of the cemetery. Start looking at that, and start getting a plan for that. Veteran section, which they own like a hundred more lots, we need to lay some more lots out on that. And cleaning up the other two cemeteries, we've still got some trees and some bushes to take out, some stones that need some new foundation under, and that, that's it, thank you.
Next, we have Jeff McConaughey with Engineering.
Good evening, Council. I'll try to make it short and sweet. I'm here to talk about the overview of the Engineering Department this year. Had another busy year. Had several construction projects, I'll go down through the list here. We obviously did the 2018, the street paving project, we did about two, two and a half miles of streets this year. Then we did the Dewey Avenue Streetscape and Bridge Project, which is about ninety-nine percent done. We're still missing the decorative lights, which they should be here sometime. We did the pavement preservation project, which included crack sealing and micro-surfacing of about one-point-four miles of streets, moving the water. We completed the Brown Heights Water Line Replacement Project up in the Brown Heights subdivision. That included all new water mains and all new water services. We got that done in June or July. Then we did the red carpet lift station and forest main replacement down there along Georgetown Road, right beside the red carpet nursing home, a new precast lift station and all-new panel, electric, and then we did about fifteen-hundred foot of six-inch forest main. Then we did a little bit of lining project this year, we did about a thousand foot of sanitary, and then about three-hundred-and-fifty foot of storm sewer lining. That makes it nice, so we don't tear up the street. There's some other design projects in the works, had to do some design work this year. The first one's the Clark Street Road Reconstruction Project, which will take place next year at the beginning of 2020. Then the water line replacement will be happening here probably next week, hopefully be done by June, and the gas company will follow in preparation for the road project. Then we'll be doing the Steubenville Avenue Road Reconstruction Project in 2021. Along with that, we'll do a water line project similar to Clark Street the following year. Down to sewer plant, we did the primary tank replacement. We did the design, the guys at the wastewater plant will be installing the new equipment in three phases for the next three years. And this year, we were awarded the 2021 Safe Route School Project, which is about two-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand, which will replace sidewalks along North Tenth Street from Steubenville to Foster Avenue, along with two flashing beakers at Gomber Avenue and North Seventh Street. We also had a consultant look at, doing some flow monitoring in the sanitary to determine some inflow and infiltration locations throughout the sanitary sewer system. Then also, I had a consultant do a street survey and analysis of all of our streets in town to determine pavement rating on all the streets, and we had about fifty-four miles of streets, and they gave us a recommendation for all those streets. So, I have that in my office, if anyone's interested in looking in your ward. And then in addition, have some other administration duties, issue building, sign demo permits, we had about sixty-four of those. Did four variances, a community reinvestment preconstruction application, and reviewed a couple of commercial site plans, which this year will be the Sking Valley Health plans to start their construction in May, and then Taco Bell plans to start construction down on East Wheeling at the old gas station. So, any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Next, we have Mike Edwards with Parks Department.
Thanks, Tom. Thank you, Mayor, and thanks to Council. As has been said, everybody has a copy of our reports in front of us, and I was going to stand here and read this, but, well, I'm reading this, we've got a guy working at the park. And I guess that's one thing I'd like to point out, we've got four full-time employees, the park's open three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year, sixteen hours a day, and we cover that with four full-time guys. For the community the size we are, I'd like to think we've got one of the nicest parks and recreation areas you see in any community. That's not because I'm out there doing it, those guys are doing it. And I'd like to give them some recognition and the thanks, because they don't get that a lot, and it doesn't matter, we've got more than just that park, we've got the Southside Park, Hendrix Park, the new Schaefer Park just receives some trees, and, you know, there's a lot of areas in the city that they've got to cover. So, thanks to them. We go into each year expecting the good and the bad, and we're never disappointed, because that's what we get, is the good and the bad. So, I started putting this list together, and the bad, you think about, you know, huge leak at the city pool last spring, which nearly threatened the opening, but thank goodness, a lot of people worked hard and got that repaired. The waiting pool is still down, but that'll be fixed in time to open this year, so we're good there. Winds blow down a light pole at Don Coss, you know, things like that. Tractors break down, tires go flat, and all this stuff that you don't expect, but you know you're going to get the bad. So, I go through the good, and I'm writing this, and I said, you know what, we've done a lot of improvements to some of the pavilions. That's great, but we've got four new pickleball courts. Three years ago, if somebody asked me what pickleball was, I'd look at you like you're crossing, I don't have any idea what it is. But there's enough demand out there that people said, hey, can we do this? They use it, they play. We took an old area that was basically neglected and unused, turned into a really nice spot, and it's getting all kinds of use, and the ex-chief police would vow to that, because Randy wears it out up there. But anyway, so we've got a new pickleball court, so that helps people. The park hosted the district and the state Little League Tournament again last year, so there's more people. One of the nicest things that we've done, and I think the mayor would agree, and some people in this room are there, we had a recognition last year, Doug Donnelly Field for George Bliss. And a lot of people sit and say, well, who's George? Well, if you've been around Cambridge, you've got to know George. Everybody knows George, and the dedication and what he gave back to kids in this community was second to none. I mean, like him, don't like him, whatever your opinion is, you can't deny the fact that he was there for the youth, the growth of this community, and that's the kind of stuff we like to see. And speaking of that, we had one family donate twenty-five thousand dollars to the park, just because they wanted to. That's people. And, you know, I'm making this list, like I said, I looked at the good and looked at the bad. The bad is things. Things break, and things go wrong, and things fall, and things go flat. The other part of this is people. And we're all in the people business. I mean, you can call it government or whatever you want to, but this is about people and making people's lives better, and all the good that I had on my list is directly resulted to people. And I, you know, when you think about that, that's good stuff. That's what we're here for. That's what you guys help us support. We can't do it without your support. So, Council, I want to thank you. The good and the bad is there for you to look at. We're going to keep doing what we've been doing, and with your support and your help, guidance to the mayor, city and safety director, you know, we'll keep at it. Any questions, just yell, and be glad to answer them best I can. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Next up, I'd like to have Utilities Office Manager Debbie McKee.
Thanks, Tom, Council. I would like to begin by recognizing my staff, Service Man Randy Zook Black, Meter/Reader Shane Smith, Bill Clerk Kim Ward, and Account Clerk Jill Stevens. I appreciate the work each of them do for the city of Cambridge. 2018 has been a busy year for the Utilities Department. I would like to share a little bit of the kind of work that we do in the Utilities Office. On any given day, our office responds to fifteen to twenty service calls per day around the city, sixty to seventy customers per day at the office window, forty to fifty phone calls per day answering questions, responding to public concerns, and directing people to various departments. We are available to all the residents who receive water and sewer for the city. Our hours are eight to four-thirty, Monday through Friday. We are the first place the public contacts when there is a question concerning an issue. What would be common questions? Water billing questions, water break questions, who do I contact for tax issues? Who do I contact for high grass? Who do I contact for leaf pickup, potholes, road maintenance? How about trash pickup? Where do I get my dog tags? Water sample analysis, I can go on and on, the questions that I get every day. As you can see, our office is on the front lines for our citizens who contact the city of Cambridge. If any of you have questions for my office, feel free to stop by or call me anytime. Thank you.
Thanks, Debbie.
Next, we have Lou Thornton, Utilities Director.
Again, I'm Lou Thornton. I was, actually, the mayor asked me about it, not quite a year ago, to take a little bit more significant role with the Utilities. I was originally working in the environmental, environmental compliance and safety. He asked me to take on the new Utilities Director's position, but he also said, you're going to have to do the other job, too. So, with that, I am going to be brief, because I'm going to pass my time on to the plant superintendents, so that they can basically let you know how the plants are running, and essentially the water and the wastewater. They are going to cover the sewer and wastewater plant, and they are going to cover also the water treatment plant, as well as the distribution system. Couple of things before they come up here, though, is, again, I do the environmental compliance, primarily, some of the things that entails is we, as city residents, we have to comply with a stormwater permit. And a lot of people aren't aware that, you know what, we have a stormwater permit, and we have things that we have to do, just like they do at the wastewater plant and the water plant, we have compliance issues that we have to meet. Some of those things are outreach programs, there's things that we have to do in-house. Tom Lanning has to train his street people how to cut the grass correctly. Believe it or not, that is true. They have to learn how to fill a gas tank, so that they don't spill over. A lot of these things end up in our water, and consequently, in our water plant, and those are some of the issues that we face with stormwater. We also have reporting requirements that are, they're pretty extensive. Some of those reporting requirements go to, they are for the EPA, but we also have reporting requirements for other entities like ODNR, and we also have reporting requirements to the U.S. EPA, which, for them, we report on wastewater, but we also have reporting requirements for air emissions, for the generators that we have at the water and the wastewater plant. So, there's a lot of the things, aside from utilities, in the sense of compliance, environmental compliance, we have other issues we have to deal with. Again, I'm going to ask that Tom McVicker and Chris Jamie will come up, and let them give you some information about the water and wastewater plants. Tom, please.
Okay, I want to say hello to everybody. I appreciate the opportunity to highlight some of the accomplishments that we've done this year at the Cambridge Water Department. As Jeff said, the Brown Heights Water Line Project was a huge undertaking that we oversaw. But one of the things that we did was we, I think, I put a huge dent in the Ridgewood problem. I know a lot of people here were involved with that. About a year and a half ago, we've been proceeding to try to correct that over the years. And this year, we've installed a small loop up there to better circulate the water through the system up there. We also had a contractor eliminate two dead ends by tying them together, so that was what we did outside of the water department. In-house, we've done a lot of things that, as a result of increased training of our employees, as well as we're renewed employee work ethic that leads to a sense of ownership for the projects they've taken on in-house. This all equates to substantial savings for the water department itself. Some of the projects that we did in-house at Ridgewood was we built and designed a phosphate feed system. This is a chemical that sequesters the iron in the water, that results in a brown water, a brown staining. It also is a corrosion hiver that coats the inside of the water lines up there to protect the water line from the water attacking it. We've installed a flow meter at the Ridgewood Booster Station, and this flow meter is important because it allows us to flow pace the chemical feed of that phosphate. By pacing it, we don't overfeed it in the night when nobody's using water, and during times of low consumption. We've also installed an automatic flushing hydrant out there, where when the chlorine levels drop below the required level, it kicks on and brings water through the system to refresh it and replenish it with good water. These projects in the Ridgewood section of the water distribution system have allowed water to be served to the residents of Ridgewood to be some of the best they can remember, according to one resident that's been there since they built it. So, from everybody I've talked to, I think we're going in the right direction, and may have a lot of positive things up there. Another project we did in-house was we replaced or removed and rebuilt the four high-service pumps. We removed, sent them out, and then reinstalled these pumps. These pumps, the significance of this is, these have been in the hole since nineteen-ninety-three, so they're twenty-plus years old, they run their life, so we wanted to be proactive instead of reactive, so that if they shut down, we'd be able to maintain water service to the city. Also in-house, we replaced all the valve actuators on the effluent of the filters, and it's another project of the same type of thing, we're proactive, we replaced them before they failed. We were notified when we tried to start buying parts that they were obsolete and parts weren't, were no longer available, so we searched for the right actuator, and we found one that we liked. The old ones operated with a four-hundred-and-eighty-volt system, we replaced them with a hundred-and-twenty-volt system, so they're much safer to work on, plus they operate much finer and smoother with the filters. One of the big projects that I've been directly involved with is the GPS, GIS mapping program. We're developing a very good base map of the water system within the city. The mapping program that we use is web-based. It's highly accurate, it's within about two-point-eight inches of accuracy, so the little curb box out there on the curb, we can find those now. Brown Heights, we've got those all GPSed in, because as the contractor installed them, we went behind them and grabbed those data points. And again, this is web-based, so that'll allow employees to utilize maps, as-built drawings and photos while they're out working in the field. If they go out on a water leak, they'll be able to actually pull up maps of that area, showing the valves, showing old as-built maps, plans from before, or photos that were taken when they were out there the last time. So, another big thing was the asset management plan. This is something that the State of Ohio mandated, gave us four months to complete. It ended up being a six-hundred-page document that requires annual revisions, and part of that was the, was required, the GPS stuff. And then real quickly, distribution, they had a rough start of the year in January, they had twenty-nine leaks, they had a hundred-and-seventy-seven leaks total in 2018, and the rest of the statistics are in there. So, with all these projects highlighted for 2018, operators were still responsible for operations and high EPA compliance of the water treatment plant. During this time, we worked together as a team During this time, we worked together as a team to ensure that the maintenance and the highest quality drinking water for the city of Cambridge was completed. Our operators accomplished this using less chemicals, a water treatment plant that is in excess of 100 years old, and abiding by increasingly stricter regulations have been seen for many years. And they're really coming down, since some of the other states have seen things with some really strict laws for us. So next year, I'll let you know about those. Thanks.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks, Tom. Next up is going to be Chris Jamail, he's in charge, he's the superintendent of the wastewater system.
Good evening, everyone. 2018 was a good but challenging year for the wastewater treatment plant. Tightening budgets are always, always a concern, but the record rainfall amount was one of the bigger concerns. I know a lot of people think, "Well, what's rain got to do with the sewer plant?" But a lot of that rainwater ends up making it into the system, and we have to treat it. But you'll see in the report I gave you, that we treated over 1.1 billion gallons of water, which is way above normal for what we usually do. We did have an annual plant and pre-treatment inspections, and happy to say, once again, no violations or correction action, corrective actions needed to be taken. As you read through the report, you'll see the great progress that we're making. Just to touch on one, even after all that rainfall amount and the stress that it puts on the plant, we still was able to achieve over 98% removal rates in certain areas of our permit, which is, that's, that's pretty good. In 2019, Jeff touched on it, about rehabbing our primary clarifiers. Once we complete that project, that would have pretty much addressed all the major issues since our last plant upgrade in 1988. We also are going to plan on upgrading our skate system. And the collection system, I talked with Jeff Huff, he's the foreman, he, they want to continue rehabbing manholes and lining the system, which in the end will help us down at the sewer plant, by not allowing groundwater into the system. In conclusion, I'd like to thank all the crew members down at the wastewater plant, and on the collection side, the Jeff Huff is under, for all their hard work. It's all paying off, and I look forward to 2019.
Thanks, Chris.
Thanks, Chris. Again, if anybody has any questions about the utilities, don't hesitate to give me a call, or call Tom and Chris at the plant. When it comes to the finances, please, by all means, give me a call. I'd be more than happy to talk to you, or get Chris and Tom as well.
Okay, we're going to move into Phase Three. Good job, everybody. Some stuff out there they haven't heard before, and I know they're scratching their head, but again, these reports are available, and they're actually pretty good reading, believe it or not. Up next is the auditor of the city of Cambridge. She's an award winner, look out. Oh, yeah. They say time flies when you're having fun. I just didn't realize we were having that much fun last year. But the main reason for the year moving so quickly for me was I was able to, being on the ground floor of our Huntington Bank project, I was fortunate enough to be working with Safety Director Hill, as well as Lieutenant Dave Peoples, to pick out all of the paints, the florings, the finishings, the lighting, everything that goes into detailing a building for office space. In addition to that, I attended each progress and project meeting that was held with the architects and the USDA. I handled all the drawdown requests and paperwork associated with paying the contractors and vendors, in addition to the regular duties that I perform. But I think, as the chief said, we have a beautiful, beautiful building, right in the heart of downtown Cambridge, that everybody can be proud of for many years to come. As the chairman of the insurance committee, we were able to secure a 3.99% renewal on our insurance rate this year. And I have to give our employees a lot of credit for that, because they are very, taking a proactive stance on their health, and it shows with our renewals. So I really appreciated that as well. And as the mayor said, I'm proud to say that, in 2018, the auditor's office, yet again, got the Auditor of State Award for Excellent Financial Reporting. And this is the fourth time in my, in my term, in my term of office, that we have been recognized. And I have to say that the reason for that, I believe, is my staff, Deputy Auditor Janet Felt, and Payroll Clerk Tammy Green. They are diligent, hardworking, they know everything, they've forgotten more than most people know. They take good care of the citizens of Cambridge and all of our employees, so I really appreciate everything that they do. And I want to thank all of you for your continued support in me as your auditor, and that's all I've got.
Thanks, Ellen.
Believe me, that takes a beehive, and she keeps us all in, well, she's always yelling at me about something, so we're just... But next up, we have the treasurer. These offices are side by side, and income tax. Colleen?
Yes, we work side by side, the auditor and the treasurer. First of all, hi, I'm happy to be here, and every year, we say it's a pleasure to work for the city, and we really mean it. Our staff works hard, and we're always pleased to be here and appreciate your support for everything that we do. The income tax supports all the services that these people are talking about, that they provide for the city. Seventy-five percent of the general fund budget, not all the money, but the general fund budget, it's important to the function of the city's services. 2010, our total tax collection that the department collects passed a new mark of over $8 million. That is compared to last year, we had $7,705,000. That includes more than general fund, when you think of income tax, but that is the main part of general fund. But the street, street improvement, our safety department, and the hotel bed taxes also collected by our department, and that's the total. Our department takes an active role in tracking new businesses, as well as new residents. Our office continues to aggressively, it's always an issue, of collecting delinquent income tax. And yes, the opioid epidemic does affect us, too, in our attempts to collect our income tax, you know, to find people and moving, and they just have a lot of issues in paying. Make you aware that the income tax assists in, if you discover anything in the delinquent area of a business or an individual, please help us out. We are implementing, this is our annual report, but for next year, we are working with Magistrate Liston, and our law director, and our police department, and we're implementing a new program. One of them is, in addition to the court working with the Attorney General, the Income Tax Delinquent Office will be working also with that. And we're hiring a new company, just to try some different things in our delinquent collections, anytime we can make more money. We're aggressive in doing that. As treasurer, I work closely with the investment committee. It is the duty of the treasurer to advise the investment committee how we invest our funds in the city. That committee consists of the mayor, the auditor, the law director, and myself as the advisor. So we manage, we make sure that we keep the funds safe, liquid, and yet look for the highest yield for money coming back, the interest coming back into the city. This year, the city income tax increased from $250,000. Compared with last year, it was about $200,000. Having our payments by credit card available has been very valuable. We increased that, credit card collections, by 36% last year, and an additional 18% this Incredibly important is the cooperation of all these departments, and you've heard positive reports, and I can't express enough how enthusiastic and how well our city does work together. And with our department, we couldn't do the things that we do. We could not collect the funds that we do without the cooperation of all the departments. I definitely want to thank our dedicated staff. Tara Schuch is our tax administrator, Brandy Hinkle is the deputy tax administrator, and we tease Sue Messino, she's our temp, and we call her our accounting specialist. She taught accounting in high schools for years, and so she's been a valuable, quick learn, quick study, and we're really happy to have her come in and assist us. We would love to have you stop in, come and see how our department works. Thank you for your cooperation.
Thanks, Colleen.
She's one of two departments that's got a code. If you're going to go in there, you've got to have the code, because they keep me locked out all the time, too. Anyhow, next up, we've got the law director, he's never lacking for something going on, so here we go. Phil first.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Let me start by saying, I really consider it a privilege to serve the citizens of Cambridge's law director. I've been here since 1994, and every morning, we roll up our sleeves, we go to work, and we do the best we can for the people. Like everyone, I'd like to thank my staff. The mayor was kind when he introduced us and said, "These are the folks that get things done." Well, that's partially true, but anyone who does anything successfully, whether it's government, whether it's private business, they've got a staff of people under them that are very good, and almost always never get enough credit for it. So a public thanks to all of the folks who work in my office. I realize that what we do involves public safety primarily, and public safety equals quality of life. And we're here to give the people the best quality of life that each of our respective positions allows us to do. The thing that takes the most of our time, even more than Mayor Orr does, would be the criminal prosecutions. At any moment, we have 600 to 650 criminal and traffic cases open, with all of the things that that entails, whether it's phone calls, paperwork, hearings, trials, plea hearings, that in and of itself is an incredible thing that the staff gets done timely, and sometimes I really don't know how they do it. I can say this, all of those cases are in the Cambridge Municipal Court. It would be very easy for Judge Nicholson or magistrate to say, "Well, this is what we're going to do, we're imposing this on you, you just do it." I have been blessed to have served my years as law director with Judge Nicholson, and now Magistrate Liston, who brings a wealth of ideas, and before any significant changes are made, will talk with me, and will try to work something out. We literally have so many things that, I've got a calendar about that big, and it's on my staff's desk. There aren't enough lines on the calendar anymore to fill in all of the cases, to fill in all of the work that has to be done on any given day. Myra Ennis Shire, who's the Assistant Law Director, has a very good relationship with the court, and I know speaks with Magistrate Liston, if not daily, almost daily, and they've come up with some innovative and creative ways to do some things within the system to benefit us in any number of ways. With crime comes crime victims. Since my first day in office, we've had the SVAA and VOCA crime victims grants, and we have received them every single year that I've been law director. Those directly provide two victims advocates for my office, full-time, to care for, and look after the crime victims that we have. Over the course of my term in office, we're close to $1.3 million that we've received, every dollar of that comes back here. You know, sometimes we watch TV, and we, recently or whenever, we see how the folks in DC get along. It's not all that well. I can tell you this, I can pick up the phone, and I can call any of these people, and I can tell you, if I don't get them within 10 minutes, they'll call me back, and if there's something I need, they take care of it. And I try to do the same to the best of my ability for them. It's that level of cooperation that lets us do all of the things that we do at a level that probably exceeds what's budgeted for, what the city can actually afford. That spirit of working together to accomplish things for the people of Cambridge, I think, takes the city of Cambridge to another level, and it's why we are doing how we are doing when others similarly situated aren't doing quite as well. 2019, simply expect to roll up the sleeves, come to work every day, and do the best we can for the citizens of Cambridge. I appreciate support of council, all the other elected officials and officers that we have here. Thank you.
He's definitely one of those people, when I first took into this job, they said, "He's your left-hand arm." Sometimes he's hit me with it a few times, but I'm going to hit him a few times, too, but the guy's awesome, and I really do appreciate, and he's right. We tend, we call each other a lot of times to get the job done, and 2019, we're going to hit the, you can already see it's spreading. So here we go, and this one here, has never been here before for this one, and we're very honored to have her tonight, Teresa Liston, judge, magistrate, whatever the official headings are, but the bottom line is, this lady's no shrinking violet, so here she goes.
Thank you. Members of council and mayor, I bring you greetings from the judicial branch of government. The mayor's right, this is the first time that the court has made a tentative report here, and I was delighted, when I saw the invitation, I will never miss an opportunity to come here with my colleagues from the city and bring you news about the court and engage with you. First thing, right off the bat, I, I'll be back in March, by the way, because that's when the court makes its official court report, you know, report. But first, I want to start by thanking everyone. I'm the new kid on the block. This is my first year here. I have never experienced a community of people who are so gracious and so giving of their time and their talents and their energy to assist me, to set me straight, to let me know what's going on, and I really appreciate that, and I also appreciate the confidence that's been placed in me by Judge Nicholson, because my, I have two jobs. I'm the magistrate where I hear cases with the court, but I'm the court administrator, so it's my job to administer the operations of the court, and it's been a wonderful opportunity. I presented a synopsis of a year and report highlighting by various areas the accomplishments of the court for the past year, but I just want to say that those really fall into three major themes for 2018. 2018 was a year of drastic change and analysis for the court. We've undertaken a lot of work in looking at systems and improving those systems. It's also been a year of the development of relationships, to have, reach out and figure out how the departments can work together, and how the court can work with other city departments to improve the quality of life in this lovely, lovely community. Sadly, though, it's been a year, for the court at least, that I must report to you, that we have encountered unprecedented problems with opiate addiction. You've heard it mentioned from others, it's witnessed daily by the courts, by police, by fire, by code enforcement, and all of these places, and it's forced us to have to look at the way we do business differently. We work every day to battle this, and we're experiencing it in new and unfortunate ways. But I stand here committed to you, as the administrator of the court, to continue in that fight, and to work hard with the other departments, so that we can address some of these problems and solve them. And in the report, you'll notice that I've been using things like technology to try to address opiate addiction and changes in systems. It's also, and I'm sure you'll be pleased to hear, it's been a year where I have concentrated on developing solutions to problems that don't involve expense of general revenue funds. In this report, I've highlighted everything we've done this year, and not one of those things has been done with an increase in general revenue funding. So I'm committed to more creative approaches, and this year, our revenue from collection of outstanding fines and costs is the highest it's been since 2012. Our total revenues exceed $2.6 million this year through a change, through many changes in our collection procedures. We've received a total of over $130,000 in grant funding for the very first time in the history of the court. We're using technology, we were pleased to be able to provide the city with 27 personal computers that the court transferred for use in the new building, after we had to replace them with technology that will... that will better adapt to our new case management system, and we were pleased to be able to work with the city. We've increased community service work, as you've heard, worked diligently with code enforcement, and we intend to continue increasing that and providing community service workers. And finally, we worked on security and facilities management this year by installing a new security camera system through the use of court special funds, and also assisting the city in, through the police department, doing our own transporting of prisoners from the county jail to the courthouse for their court appearances. We estimate that represented about a $47,000 savings in staff cost to law enforcement. So with that being said, I can't tell you how honored I am to be in this room tonight, to be a part of such a fine group of people, to be welcome to this community, and I pledge to you that I will continue to work just as hard every minute for as long as I'm here to improve the operations of the court and to be a good citizen of this community in the real public service sense of that word. And I appreciate everything that you've done to help support me in those efforts.
Thanks, Judge.
Thank you, Judge Liston. It's been a great opening of information and communication in the property code area, just with the court helping out there, that's been huge. I don't know how we'd have got through some of those things without some of that assistance. Next up, we've put this in here every year, and as they told me when they came in the room, they started alphabetically first last year, and they were clear second to last. So it's the airport, come on up, guys. Judge Morehead, I believe, is giving some statements here tonight, although Terry's in the backup role.
Good evening to you all. I'm Rob Morehead, and I'm appearing here this evening as the president of the Cambridge, let me get this right, Area Regional Airport Authority. And if I, I'm going to just part for a moment from my prepared remarks here and for the folks at home, because we get this every once in a while. What are you down there? And we are a joint authority established by a resolution from the county commissioners of both the city and the county. And this went back, I don't know, 30, 40 years ago, when they needed some more money. We always need more money, but the county could not give money directly to the airport unless we have established an authority, and so we did that. And the city was good to their word, and they, before that, they'd had all the real estate in their name, and all the real estate got transferred into the authority's name. We've had it ever since. The employees are all employees of the authority. They're covered under P E R S, that state's employees. And so we come to you for part of our money, we go to the county for part of our money now, we get money from the feds, we get money from the states, we get private money just wherever, sometimes we find it in the couch cushions, but that's wherever we can get it. And we appreciate your support, we appreciate the support from your professional staff. They've always been kind to us and give us whatever help they can, and we share some equipment between the county and, between the authority and yourself. I'm not going to go too far into this, I want to point a couple of matters to you that, when we talk about people and employees and in and out, we're talking jobs, and that's where they come from. There may be some that drive in, but an awful lot of them fly in, and a lot of things that happen, the people fly in. We have some local companies, good companies, big bucks, that will fly their people in and out of our airport, all over the United States, to their work sites, because they work all over the United States. Just as I've noticed tonight, that your sphere goes beyond the county, gone to city limits, ours certainly goes beyond Cambridge, Guernsey County, and the state of Ohio. We have to think in a national mode and not a local mode. We have some of the new businesses, there's an Ascent Resources that is recently located to the industrial park down there, and they're producing a lot of oil and gas wells in this area. The only reason I mention that is, and I'll come back to this in a minute, they, no more than got here, and we started, some people showing up, some suppliers of theirs came in, were trying to figure out the facilities of the airport, and they were going to buy, this guy's going to buy a big airplane to come in and see him, so he could just go up the hill and make his business calls and then come back down and leave. Unfortunately, we had problems with a fuel tank that I'll get to in just a moment. They said, "No, I can't sell you any fuel right now, but we're working on that, and we'll get back to you on that." So they will. We had some helicopters that were here last year that were working, again, all through southeastern Ohio, and they set up a serious business in our big hangar down there and did some serious maintenance, taking helicopters apart, putting them together. The maintenance people and the pilots would stay in the local hotels downtown, they're on the strip, eating the restaurants, and they liked it here because they were close, and we gave them good facilities, and they carried on that way. They're back again. We've had, we've established a little clientele, as I say in my notes here, of the helicopters. One of, the county bought us a humongous jet tank, tanker truck, and it has what they call a single-point refueling on them, and when it pulls up in front of a plane or a helicopter, they know that that's a serious tank and we're serious people doing stuff, and so they worry it. So they've been good to us. We've had the, we've got the numbers there and the instruction lights. We suffered a real setback at the end of 2018 when our two 30-year fuel tanks went out two years early, and we tore a filter apart, and the filter was just full of rust, and so we said, "We're not going to do that." And we had a previous tank down there, it went out two years ago, and you helped us with that to get it cleaned up, but we couldn't return it to service, so, but our marshal let it stay down there. So we're in the business now trying to find money to get a new tank, to get it in there, but we'll, we'll stay tuned on that one, so. But I thank you for your service and for your help, and we appreciate it, and we're just trying to do the best we can for your airport. It's not ours, we don't own it, we don't have a thing to do with it. We do have a lot to do with it, but we, and we do own it, but we're going to accept the ownership of it and try and just keep it going. Thank you.
Thank you.
One thing, I said it over and over again, I'm going to say it in closing, I could stand here and go on and on and on. It doesn't take a genius to look out here, we're busy and all get out. 2018 was off the charts. I've had, you know, people come up to me all the time, and they're like, "Man, we've got every street, you've got a sign here, a sign there, and somebody's over there," and other companies, AP, Columbia Gas, come in, and they piggyback on our projects. And our town's getting first series of dibs on some other, they don't have to be in Cambridge, they could be somewhere else. And that's all infrastructure upgrades, that's all stuff to our residents, and that's all on their dime. Even though they do a little cutting and banging, we'll get there eventually, it all works out like the Clark Street thing, and it's going to start getting, it's going to start that long process. One thing I didn't hear much about tonight, I do want to put it out there so everyone's getting prepared, because it's going to take a community to get through this. After Memorial Day weekend, Labor Day weekend, they're going to hit us with closing the South Gate Bridge, and they're saying it'll be shut down, Jeff, until October?
Yep.
That's a long time. But the viaduct's going to get real important. Now, it's not funny, but it is kind of funny, and I kid the engineer quite a bit, and it's not his fault, but it's just where we're at. The lights on the viaduct, in 12 years I've been in this office, we haven't had lights yet. But first four years I was here, someone stole the wires out of the poles, and then they were so outdated, we couldn't get stuff to replace them, so we kind of rode through it, and then we wrote a plan, and finally, it came due to get all new, and they've got new poles. We just don't know where they're at. But anyhow, they're coming, they keep telling me they're coming. You know, I want to thank everybody in this room for the reports. I do want you to dig into it, the media, I know you guys and girls put it out there. If you need any more information, we've got plenty of information. 2019, I've got some more, you'll hear more of that going forward. We're going to do all the above and then some. Quite honestly, in my meeting this morning at 10 o'clock, it became apparent to me, and Tom Lanning and a few others made ha-ha at my expense, if we pull the grand in for East Willing Sewer, we could literally have every road down to one lane at one point for at least a week or two. That's not really a good idea, but, you know, we're just, we're trying for our town. We just, it's no one's fault, it's just time to remodel and fix stuff. It's been long overdue, and it's right smack in our face, and we, the residents, the administration, the council, all of us, we all got a lot of responsibilities, and we're going to play music and work hard to make it all work out, and we're going to bang heads a few times, and we're going to get up and go again tomorrow, and I think the law director said it good, roll up our sleeves, and here we go. So, each year's a little different, I hope you enjoyed the way we did it this year. Here's the group, and like they said, the people behind them are awesome, and I could bring them all up in here, too. Boy, that'd really get things going. But, you know, we have a citywide picnic every year, we started out about eight years, nine years back, and these last couple of years, and in Christmas party, we hadn't moved to the Armory, they're really attending, and you can just feel the buy-in and the participation and the focus. We love our community, and it's returned to us, and we give it back, and hopefully, we can continue, but we've got to try hard every day. The opioid thing's just one of many, but that's the one that probably stares out all the time, and it's sad. And we're going to get up and love each other and work the best we can, try, and that's all we can do. So, folks, we regroup, thanks for your patience. This mayor signs off, and I know my people's like, "Shh, quiet, mayor, get out."
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. City attorney, which I think we've already heard from you tonight, communications.
The only thing I have tonight is the monthly report from municipal court.
Mr. Marlin?
Make a motion, we accept, place on file.
Ms. McMillan?
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Reports of committees.
Report of Finance Committee, January the 22nd, we recommend that council authorize the treasurer to advertise for bids for depositories of various accounts for the city
Next, please.
Report of Finance Committee, January the 22nd, we recommend that council authorize the administration to apply for ODNR Community Wildfire Risk Reduction Grant.
Next.
Report of Finance Committee, January the 22nd, we recommend that city council authorize the administration to apply for the Fire Department Equipment Grant.
Next, please.
Report of Legislative Committee, January the 22nd, we recommend that council adopt an ordinance establishing guidelines in the makeup of the city of Cambridge Board of Control.
Any unfinished business? Audience portion, is there anybody in the audience that hasn't already spoken tonight? New business? And ordinance and resolutions?
An ordinance authorizing the treasurer to advertise for bids for depositories and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Conaway?
Motion to suspend.
Ms. McMillan?
Second to suspend.
Roll call, please.
Evancho?
Yes.
Leonard?
Yes.
Marlin?
Yes.
Conaway?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Loffman?
Yes. Mr. Evancho?
Motion to pass.
Mr. Marlin?
Second to pass.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Loffman?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Conaway?
Yes.
Marlin?
Yes.
Leonard?
Yes.
Evancho?
Yes. And that ordinance is declared adopted? Next, please.
An ordinance authorizing the administration to apply for ODNR Community Wildfire Risk Reduction Grant.
Mr. Wolverton?
Motion to suspend.
Mr. Leonard?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Marlin?
Yes.
Conaway?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Leonard?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Evancho?
Yes. And that ordinance is declared adopted? Next, please.
An ordinance authorizing the administration to apply for Fire Department Equipment Grant.
Mr. Conaway?
Motion to suspend.
Mr. Wolverton?
Second motion.
Roll call, please.
Conaway?
Yes.
Marlin?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Loffman?
Yes.
Leonard?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Evancho?
Yes. And that ordinance is declared adopted? Next, please.
An ordinance establishing guidelines and makeup of the city of Cambridge Board of Control.
Mr. Wolverton?
Motion to suspend.
Mr. Evancho?
Second to motion.
Roll call, please.
Leonard?
Yes.
Evancho?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Loffman?
Yes.
Marlin?
Yes.
Conaway?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. Marlin?
Motion to pass.
Mr. Wolverton?
Second to motion.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Conaway?
Yes.
Marlin?
Yes.
Loffman?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Evancho?
Yes.
Leonard?
Yes.
And that ordinance is declared adopted? So we'll move on to miscellaneous. Anybody under miscellaneous?
Announcement for the Finance Committee, we'll meet next Monday, February 4th, at
Mr. Marlin?
Before I say, I'd like to thank everybody for coming in, and with that said, I make a motion, we adjourn.
We are adjourned.